Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, February 19, 2025. It is 9:04 a.m. My name is Tim Anser, Chair of the Board. To my left, Vice Chair, Commissioner Rachel Grant, Commissioner Carolina Mejia on Zoom, Commissioner Klaus May or may not be joining us this morning. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings, and public virtual attendance on our Thurston County YouTube channel. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and will be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. First up on the morning's agenda is Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Community Advisory Work Group, CAU as we like to call it, a letter and presentation. So no further ado, if you folks are here, Rebecca Harvey, come on up. Kick us off for that.
Absolutely. Good morning, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the commissioners for your continued leadership and support of us as we, along with our community partners in the other jurisdictions, implement actions in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. I also want to thank our guests from the community for being here and raising this important discussion. As we know, the climate crisis is here. It's getting worse. It's an emergency. We are not on target, as our guests will share, we are not on target to meet our goals for greenhouse gas reduction, as is unfortunately most of the world. So this is not a unique situation in Thurston County, but it is, you know, a dire situation that we are here to talk about today and address the climate crisis.
For our Thurston County goals, we're squarely on target and doing great work.
I just meant the greenhouse gas goals. It's this true statement that our greenhouse gas targets are, no, we're not there yet. So there's a lot of work to do, but I want to highlight what we can do and, you know, the actions and investments we can make. So on January 27th, I sent an email brief highlighting some of what Thurston County has achieved under board direction since 2018, when we began implementing and developing and implementing the Climate Mitigation Plan. In 2021, just after accepting that plan, the board committed funding of $337,500 to implement the TCMP. In 2022, that created the Position of Climate Mitigation Senior Program Manager, which is my position. And 2023 to 2024, I got busy applying for, there's a lot of state funds for this work, which is great with our Climate Commitment Act and other sources. So I applied for and was awarded over $1.2 million in grants to implement actions in the plan. We also launched the CPACER Financing Program, which is community, I mean, sorry, commercial property assessed clean energy and resiliency financing. And as you all know, Thurston County is serving as the lead jurisdiction in developing and implementing Energize Thurston right now. So we have a lot going on on the website, which is thurstonclimatecollaborative.org. There's even more on our progress report so you can tap what we're doing as a region. So that all said, there remains a lot of work to do, and our guests are here to talk more about that. And I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me just see if this works. Okay. Well, I'm Stephen Bernat. I've been living in the county for over 37 years. I'm a retired state employee who worked on natural resource issues my whole career, protecting water quality and salmon habitat, and along with climate. I've worked a lot with the Greg R. administration on climate issues. And in my retirement, I've been blessed with the opportunity to work locally on this issue for this community. What we'd like to do, this is what we'd really like this to be, is a conversation with county commissioners about thanking you, first of all, about supporting the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, the results of current efforts, the needs of the community, and maybe some suggestions on how to move forward, and what potential successes that could come about as a result of that, and then hopefully answer any questions you might have. So you want to take it from there?
So.
Or introduce Nathaniel. You want to introduce yourself?
Good morning. My name's Nathaniel Jones. I'm here representing the League of Women Voters of Thurston County, and thank you for inviting us to speak with you this morning.
And I'm Tom Crawford, President of Thurston Climate Action Team, and also a member of the Community Advisory Work Group for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative. I'd like to take it from here.
Go ahead and.
Yeah. And first of all, as we indicated previously, we're very appreciative of the county's early and consistent support for climate action in our communities. You were one of the first agencies to provide some financial, a little bit of financial support for Thurston Climate Action Team and get on board, and eventually you became part of the collaborative effort to develop a climate mitigation plan to set targets and to move forward in implementing that plan to meet the targets. And along with, you know, in 2021, when the Board of County Commissioners adopted the plan, in early 2021, there was also a climate emergency resolution that you all adopted that included some language indicating that you would put climate as a key consideration in all major decisions. So make your decision, that you would make your decisions through a climate lens. So I think that was a very forward-looking step to take. And in the meantime, you've hired Rebecca and done some other things in the organization to start to move this climate agenda forward, including your full participation from the beginning in the, what's now the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative. So we think those are very positive steps and provide a platform or framework from which to move forward, we hope, a little bit more aggressively to address this problem. So as has it been indicated, as Rebecca indicated, you know, we, members of the Community Advisory Work Group, last year, well, two years ago, almost two years ago now, were at a retreat in which this problem was, in which the staff presented a analysis of the actual greenhouse gas results that we're seeing. And at that time, it was, you know, we still had quite a significant ways to go. We're still a little bit below the 2015 levels, which is the baseline year that was, that's being used to measure results. And now we learned that we are actually 5% above that baseline level. So that's not really good news, right? We're going in the wrong direction. So that concerns us as a Community Advisory Work Group, you know, because that's the primary reason why we're all here and engaged in this work, is to bring down those emissions. So in response to that situation, many of the members pulled together and developed a letter of concern that was presented first to the Executive Committee of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, and that was done this, over this past year. And then it was presented to, and then we agreed to present it at the suggestion of members of the Executive Committee, presented to each of the individual elected bodies for each of the jurisdictions, including yourselves. So that's the process that we're going through. This is actually the final presentation we will be making. And so the couple of the major points that we've made in this letter are, first of all, that we really need more resources. We need more resources to support, you know, the staff capability to be able to move forward on even very basic, simple policy issues. It takes development, takes steady time to develop those policies and present them to yourselves. And we need additional focus and coordination, we think, among policy member, among policymakers such as yourselves, as well as within the operational organizational structure of the county and of the other jurisdictions, so that sort of the right hand knows what the left hand is trying to do, right? So we're, on the one hand, we've stated these goals, you all have, on behalf of the community, stated these goals and committed to these things. And on the other hand, sometimes there will be permits issued or other decisions, other funding or policy decisions made that aren't quite in sync with keeping our greenhouse gas emissions down and reducing those emissions. For example, to permit some large development, you know, well, what impact does that have on our greenhouse gas emissions, you know? So sometimes the message doesn't quite get through, and there are decisions that seem to be, continuing to be made that aren't quite in sync with our climate goals. So, and then finally, we do know that, to bring it back to sort of the global level of where we are, the implications of this, we know that we are already at 1.5 degrees above pre-industrial levels in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, in terms of the effect of climate change, of greenhouse gas emissions on our climate. So in other words, our average temperatures are already at that 1.5 degree goal that was set by the, within the Paris Climate Agreement in 2015, I believe that was. So that was the international goal that we set, and we're already there. So we're in trouble, right? And we really, if we don't take action, very strong and bold and significant action, very soon, we're going to be in deep, deep trouble. And we don't, you know, we're seeing, and what we're seeing in terms of wildfires in California, I just heard a report this morning coming in on my car, the radio, about the devastation that the flood has had in Kentucky, throughout the state, you know, flooding. So things like this are just kind of a little bit louder wake-up calls to us and saying, hey, this is serious. This threatens our whole way of life here, you know? And so we really need to look at this seriously. And the next thing, the other thing I would say is that the next generation, you know, what they're, what they'll be going through, if we don't tackle this problem much more seriously than we have so far, I mean, from their point of view, you know, our claim that we tried, we did the best we could, I'm sorry, just will not be good enough. So, I mean, I hate to put it in those stark terms, but that's my belief. So we need to think globally and act locally. And this slide, again, is an actual photo of the aftermath of the fires in California, just saw the last few months. So again, this is another wake-up call, a little bit louder this time than the previous wake-up calls. This is the future that we're facing. So with that, I'd like to turn to the actual letter. So let's go ahead. So this is our attempt to raise these issues and bring these global issues down to our local communities and the implications for our local communities. And so the summary is, I think I've already given you, you know, we need more resources, we need bolder action, we need to be able to really pay attention to the needs of our community in this regard. And so I won't, I think you've had it, you probably all read it, so I won't belabor that. But I would like to invite Nathaniel to share maybe his thoughts and the thoughts of the League of Women Voters on this topic.
Great, thanks. So again, thank you for having us. My name's Nathaniel Jones, and I want to start by just telling you the purpose of the League of Women Voters, which is to promote political responsibility through active citizen participation in local government. That's why I'm here. I have some perspective about the 2021 Climate Mitigation Plan, having served on the Steering Committee for that document back in the day. And some of you may remember that adoption of that plan was a real milestone for our community. But the mitigation plan actually followed many, many years of work leading up to that point, work that took place within local jurisdictions. Olympia's formal climate commitment goes all the way back to 1990, a full 30 years before the adoption of this plan. So the plan actually was a culmination of decades of work in our local community. From my perspective, the Climate Mitigation Plan represents some of the best in our governmental work in Thurston County. It had broad representation, adequate resources to produce the plan, a clear set of implementing strategies and actions, and a robust performance monitoring and accountability protocol. And it's today that that accountability protocol is coming to fruition. The Community Advisory Work Group and local concerned citizens are alerting you that we're failing on this plan as a region. All indications are that we will not meet our adopted science-based climate targets. So alert, there's a problem here. In July, as we said, the CAU sent this letter. The League of Women Voters has been monitoring the activities and was aware, and we signed on in July to the letter from the CAU to make sure that you understand where our region is today in this set of issues. The League of Women Voters supports climate policies that are consistent with the best available climate science, and we trust in that science, that, and those actions, that it will ensure a more stable climate system for future generations. We at the League view climate change as a serious threat facing our nation, our planet, and our local community. Like you, League members know that climate change is upon us. We've mentioned Kentucky and LA, but it's, that's just part of an ever-growing list of disastrous disruptions to lives and to communities. And these are long-term disruptions that are economically and emotionally devastating. In the face of more frequent and more powerful climate disasters, the most recent reliable projections indicate that we are facing more frequent and more powerful climate disasters. The projections are becoming more concerning, showing that we're hurtling forward at a faster rate of warming with more severe impacts when compared to previous estimates. We at the League urge you and our entire community to take affirmative action to implement strategies of the mitigation plan, to continue to monitor its progress and ensure that we're using science to inform future amendments to the plan. It feels a little odd that you've got three old white guys talking to you this morning. However, I believe that we represent the community this morning on this topic. We recently had a November election where the Climate Commitment Act received outstanding support across the state and within Thurston County. So I just want to say to you that I very much appreciate being here today with you this morning, that this morning's briefing gives me some assurance that our elected leaders want to know what needs to be done, and that you're open to learning more about the challenges and opportunities facing our region. And I just want to thank you. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share my thoughts.
So moving on, you know, from our perspective, the needs for the community include reducing emissions from buildings through conservation, both on new and existing buildings. And the county and the other jurisdictions are working hard on that. That's one of our regional initiatives. But we haven't, we don't have the capacity to move ahead on transportation issues, to reduce greenhouse gases associated with that. And we also appreciate the fact that, you know, with the new climate chapters and all the comp plans that are about to be looked at by all the jurisdictions, and that urban forestry is being considered so that we have some carbon and ag practices that are considered in this mixture. But we want to make sure that all of this is done, that meet socioeconomic differences throughout the committee, the community in an equitable way. So in talking with staff, and first of all, we're not here to criticize Rebecca. Rebecca is doing great work for you and for us as a community. And this is more of a constructive conversation about how we can do better, how we can resource this issue better. One of the suggestions has been engaging more with our partners with Port of Olympia. I've talked to the Executive Director. She's really interested in engaging in this. As I think Tom has talked to one of the Port Commissioners, intercity transit is key to dealing with transportation issues. As you know, you know, seeking, and I know Rebecca works as hard as she can to look for grant money in addition to whatever base level funding the county provides. And we're here to help in any way we can for that. One of the suggestions was that the Commissioner's Office needed a full-time grant manager to help, not just, because you can go after all the money you want, but it takes a lot of administrative overhead to actually manage those grants, report on their successes, and then you still have to have, be able to have enough headroom to get work done. In adopting the climate lens initiative earlier, the question I have is, have we actually implemented that thought throughout the county government? So, you know, integrating all the decisions through a climate lens, you know, do we have a staff member, for example, assigned from each of the departments that can work with Rebecca on climate issues? Do we, are we integrating decisions, both at the staff and in the governance level, through a climate lens? And have we set aside matching funds when grants do come available? Lots of them have, you know, a matching share that's needed. And so those are some suggestions we thought you should consider as you go into your budgetary session coming up. If successful. You know, this improves health, protects and restores clean water and air, reduces health risk by preventing disease, creates family wage jobs, creates new business opportunities in the clean energy economy, improves equity, social justice, and other for all members of the community, and enhances the community, showing that we care for each other. So in summary, thank you for your leadership on climate. We're not meeting the goals we set out in 2021. We ask that you look for ways to increase resources towards this effort. We're here to help in any way we can. And there are many community efforts that will result from this work as we move forward. And the CAU members are committed to assisting you in any way we can in accelerating climate work. Thank you very much. And we're happy to take any questions or start a discussion about this with you.
You know, I would just, the assertion, or the notion that we're not, that Thurston Region is not meeting its goals. I've heard, I can understand that the world is not meeting its goals, or the country is not meeting its goals. Like that, I've heard, but then I hear from the Assistant County Manager that we have set goals, and then all of the things that you talk about, like looking through a lens, it's baked into the DNA of the county to look at these things through this lens. So like, you know, we have a lot of these conversations, and Rebecca does a great job. So I would just, like, the assertion that the county is not meeting its set goals, I would, I would be curious to learn more about.
Let me parse my statement a little bit. We are meeting our actions. I think that the Board of County Commissioners has done a great job over the past few years of working hard at the actions. What they're talking about is the actual percentage of the goals, and those are tough goals to meet. And there is a wide world out there. Thurston County doesn't operate in a bubble. So it's hard to pull those two things apart, but you have to have two thoughts in your mind at the same time. The county and the Board of Commissioners has been a leader in our region in the actions that it's taken, and that's what I mean by being successful in meeting the goals.
Yeah, in the region, if not the country or world. I mean, you're saying that Olympia took the initiative in 1990 to, so that's pretty progressive. So like, as a region, we're leading, we're in the vanguard, right? I mean, that would be, you know, maybe outside of Oslo or something like that.
The stats that we gave you in the presentation was created by the staff within all the jurisdictions as an interim measure of showing how are we doing from an accountability standpoint.
Can I speak to this?
Yeah.
What our guests are speaking of specifically is the greenhouse gas inventory, and that's one measure. That's one in the monitoring plan for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Annual, now we've extended it to every three years because it takes a lot of staff time to produce a greenhouse gas inventory, and greenhouse gas inventories are not the best measure, to Josh's point, of how we're doing as a county. So what our community members are talking about is the targets that were formally adopted of a 45% reduction in county-wide greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. We're not on target to meet that. That's a true statement. But there's a lot of sources of those greenhouse gas emissions that we have no control over, and they're global trends. So I believe that's not the best indicator of our progress towards.
Okay. I just, you know, I'm really sensitive to it. When the newspaper watches this and they write the headline Thurston Region is not meeting its goals, I also want to know what goals we are meeting, and it sounds like there's a lot of them. And, you know, how we can lean into those better is important to me as well.
Sure. Right, Tom, and then I'll get to Commissioner Grant.
So another way of, that I would frame this, is the purpose of the Climate Mitigation Plan is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And the purpose of reducing greenhouse gas emissions is to do our part to prevent this global catastrophe that we're looking at, right? Okay, so if the purpose of the plan is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and we're not reducing greenhouse gas emissions, then that would seem to be a wake-up call, that maybe we need to think about things differently. Maybe we need to do things differently so that we can start meeting those goals. Because that's the whole. Because that's the whole reason, I mean, in my, I've been with this since the beginning, you know, since 2016, 2017, with this process of developing the Climate Mitigation Plan. And I think that's the primary reason why we're, we're working on this, is to do our part to deal with this global issue, right? And so I'm just, that's the way I think about it anyway. That's the reason why we're here. We're not getting, we're not meeting that goal, so what do we need to do differently? That's the way I kind of think about it.
Commissioner.
Well, thanks for everyone for coming, and, you know, and I want to thank Tom for meeting and briefing me on getting me up to speed on this, you know, a few weeks ago. And, you know, I look at this, I think I'm understanding you, Commissioner, kind of where you're coming in. I look at this a little differently. I mean, from, so what I'm hearing us say is that we set these goals, the goals are still there, we have to meet them. We set a bunch of actions, and what I'm hearing our assistant county manager say is that we are meeting the actions that we set to meet the goals, we're actually accomplishing. But what I love about strategic planning and planning is that there's always needs to be this, this is our time to check in, right? And that we're checking in and saying, did the actions that we originally laid out in our plan, are they working? Are they moving us towards the goal? Are we getting where we need to be based on what we originally set out to do? And what we're finding is that we're not. And that, that we, it's time for us to, to reevaluate or to look at, you know, what, what parts of those actions need to be updated and how can we reinforce those actions and/or adjust? And so what I'm hearing you guys say is part of that is what you're bringing to us as a suggestion. And you're saying that based on all of the incredible work that you guys do in all of your different areas, that, that if we wanted to reinforce and change and kind of reshift, we, you're suggesting that we really need to get another grant manager so that we can put more efforts, more actions, more things into place, and so that we can start to more aggressively meet the goal, correct? Right. And so that's, that's kind of what I'm hearing. And so, so I'm writing down for me, you know, that this is an opportunity for us to be able to say, cool, we're actually using the, you know, a strategic plan, which is what it is, is, and we're saying it's time for us to check in with that strategic plan. We know that we're not meeting the goals, so it's time to adjust the actions in the strategic plan. So that's kind of what I'm hearing us say right now. That's great.
Yeah, I just, I, I hope that we're being clear, that this is not just about global emissions. This is about Thurston County. And I use the word failure, and I use that, that doesn't come lightly to me. We are not meeting our goals. We're not meeting our adopted targets. And so I just want to be real clear. We're not making it.
So, okay, I, I've got like four brain cells that are working right now. And I'm hearing, you know, like, this is what, this is like the most progressive, like, environmentally sensitive, like, on it community that I'm aware of. Like, I'm sure there's others out there. I'd like to know what they do, because if we're not meeting our goals, then is anyone in the world meeting their goals? Like, is there, in, you know, in some Scandinavian country, are they all over it and their greenhouse gas emissions are plummeting because they've got, you know, they've got some policy that we should adopt? Because if we're not doing it, and, and we're, we're putting a lot of resources and effort into it, and we've got great minds working on it, then, then something is wrong. It's almost like, you know, like, what is it, you know, the definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing and expecting different results? So like, I, like, I guess I need to revisit the, the, the goals or the action plan, because if, you know, if the action's not working, and we're working really hard on it, and then the suggestion, well, well, do it harder, you know? Is that going to result in the, in the, in the desired outcomes that we're looking for? Or is it just going to, you know, three years later, you gentlemen come in with your beards a little wider, and I'm glad you laughed and weren't offended, because I thought it was good. And, you know, you come in, whoa, 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 we need to do it harder. And I'm like, well, maybe these aren't the, I don't know. I'm, I'm a simple fireman. I don't know how these things work, but.
Well, Commissioner, I think what we're asking for, what we're finding as we work with staff within all four jurisdictions is they are capacity limited. So in order to move forward on more of the actions in the plan, there needs to be more commitment and resources and staffing. That's really the simple message here, is, yes, we think we're, we're trying to move in the right direction, but we're spending all our time right now on conserving energy in residential buildings and that kind of thing. And we're, although the county and all the jurisdictions have transportation projects, we haven't actually tackled the transportation goal in the plan in a comprehensive manner. So that, that's all we're asking for at this point in time, is we need more capacity to move forward on more of the tasks that are in the plan.
I think also there's, even within the residential and the building energy arena, there's a level of effort issue. You know, we're only able to, I think the Energize Thurston, its goal is to have energy efficiency improvements and, and electrification work done in, what, a few dozen homes? Something like that?
A couple hundred.
A couple hundred homes? Okay. And what we need is that, like, at the scale of a thousand homes, you know, or 1,500 homes every year. So it's, it's, it's a matter of, you know, what, what, what capacity that we have even in that area.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I'll go with one, and then I'll pass to Commissioner again, and maybe come back. So the specific question, you mentioned local governments taking actions contrary, that's in the letter. The example you gave Tom was a development decision, and we do development decisions every day under our building code. So can you remind me what's, what the mitigation plan says about what we should be doing with respect to development, to permitting development? Because obviously we're a hugely growing county, one of the fastest growing. We're going to be developed, we're going to be permitting development. I mean, there's no moratorium on development. I'm pretty sure that's not in the plan. So what is in the plan? Like, what are we doing when we say yes to, when our CPED department says yes to a building project? What do we, what should we do? I mean, I, I'm sitting on the building, State Building Code Council. We're working on trying to make buildings more efficient, you know, by the governor's goals by 2030. I think 70% more efficient. We're, we're starting to ask the legislature to study embodied carbon within the materials that create building. That's a brand new frontier. So I'm working hard over on that side. But on this side, when I sit as commissioner, and again, I've got CPED staff, was Josh, now it's Ashley, but, you know, we've got them downstairs making decisions on projects. Remind me what it is that the TCMP says that Thurston County should be doing on that front?
Yeah, I was referring to the, the climate lens.
Yeah.
Part of, of the emergency declaration. And so I guess the thinking behind that is that whenever, you know, you make, you know, you look at those kinds of decisions that you ask the question or think about, or have some data that informs, you know, what's the, what's the impact of this on our greenhouse gas emissions? And it might be within a range of choices that you have available and what, you know, I mean, ideally, you would, you would want to make those decisions in a way that reduces greenhouse gas emissions to the extent possible. Think about, you know, community design and all, all those kinds of things and how all that sort of adds up. So that's what I was referring to.
So there'd be like embedded in a, to a local CPED checklist or some sort of additional climate analysis worksheet that goes along with projects?
Yeah, the City of Olympia has actually done some work in this area.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a possibility. I mean, when I look at all the building that's been going on, particularly in Northeast County, this, and I know that not all of that is, of course, Thurston County jurisdiction. But we've lost hundreds of acres of forest in the last five years because of some of that development. The stormwater systems that are put in place, they're slicking off every last tree and then planting back. So when, if you left more of the native vegetation, you would actually have to build less stormwater facilities. Question I have, are bike lanes being considered in most projects? How are we making sure that the different socioeconomic folks who can't afford a car, but this community is generally built around cars, how do they get from point A to point B, whether it's for work, for play, for shopping, that kind of thing? How do we make sure there's, you know, there's a, it's a wonderful thing to have the Chalice Western Trail go more south and the other trail going east west, but, for example, there are no major trails into the south end of the county over by, whether it's Miller Spania or, or, you know, going that direction now towards Rochester. So.
We're, we're starting construction on the Black Lake Belmore Trail this year. And then I just sent an email to the county manager about exactly what you're talking about this morning. You're right, we do need to.
So I'm just suggesting, when we do these things, there are a lot of things to consider that can make this place a place that people want to move to and live in and recreate in. And it all helps climate as well as all those quality of life factors. And it helps people get from point A to point B or whatever, on top of all the energy of fishing work. And I, I'd love to talk to you sometime about, I call it wood is good, but embodied carbon in buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Those are good reminders. Commissioner.
Thank you. I, I kind of want to go back to something that Tom said in terms of, you know, how many residences are electrifying. And I think that's one of the major key points, is that, not saying that I disagree with any of your suggestions, but I'm seeing that at such a high level, and I'm not really seeing that effect going down to people who are actually there. Like, I, and I'm not seeing kind of that connection with actual community members who are not in tune with climate, or, you know, they know about it, they've heard about it, but that, you know, they care about it, but it's not something that they're in tune with. And I, and I'm not seeing that education piece, I'm not seeing that touch point with actual community members. And so I'm, I'm asking, where does that come in? Because that's going to be, I think, a major movement. And even with my parents, as they moved in, talking about heat pumps and talking about all these other processes, it was a huge education curve for them. And, you know, going out to communities, especially communities of color, it's something that they don't know anything about. They don't know the programs that the counties have, that the cities have. They don't know who they need to contact, right? And if, you know, my parents are, are right now looking into, going into an electric going, because they had natural gas, they didn't know that, right? They're, and, and so where does that come in? Because I feel like we can keep assessing these goals and throwing resources at this general policy level, but if there's no education to our, our community members, then we're just going to keep making baby steps. Like, there has to be a transition in how we live and how we, so when is, I guess, when is that going to come into play?
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Tom was referring to the goals of Energize Thurston, which hasn't launched yet, and we are about to launch it and countywide. So this hasn't existed as a program in Thurston County, but we are gearing up, as you know, to launch it, and it's addressing that exact issue with, you know, five in-person workshops around the county. Julia's here, our community energy fellow. She's working so hard on an outreach and education and, you know, events that we're going to table at, and many community organizations all over the county targeting areas of South County that may not have this information, and working closely with Habitat for Humanity, who works with vulnerable, you know, overburdened populations to.
Roofed yesterday, yeah.
And the installers that we selected are really focused on education. So I'm really hopeful that we're going to really launch into that.
So I guess, thank you, Rebecca. Right? Because that's kind of what I wanted to get to, right? As, I think that's another piece that we really need to be pushing through, right? And I agree with the policy decisions and, and that, but then it also has to be like community, there is also these opportunities coming up right now. And kind of wanted for us to spell that out in a public forum, because for people tuning in, I think it's very important to understand that there are going to be these educational touchpoints for them to make that transition and for them to make those changes in their homes as well. And then I just had one other thing in terms of the grants manager. I've been, and so I guess more of a clarifying question, is it a grants manager or a grants writer? Because what I'm hearing is writing the grants is a huge, huge burden on our staff. And it takes a lot of time trying to meet all these different things. And so, but you're saying a grants manager. And so just trying to actually get the clarity and what the request is, I would say all of those skills would be welcome, because there's a lot of work, not only writing the grants. I, I enjoy writing grants, but there's so many grants out there, so.
Are these staff requests or are these?
Oh, okay.
It's their request.
Their request.
We're, we're suggesting that you hire staff to, to grants management.
The point was just that after you write the grant, there's still a lot of management of reporting that, you know, I'm doing all of that for the grants as well, so.
Remember Rebecca needs, is what I, right?
Yeah, exactly.
We support what Rebecca's trying to do. I think this all, all ties back to what Caroline was saying though, too, is I think what we've learned, what, some of the things I've learned over the years of, oh my gosh, we have a problem and we, we need more education, we need more staff, and it's just a circular thing that happens all the time, right? We need, we need more. But, but it starts with this position of like, if we can find somebody who can write a grant, who will get us more money, if we had three more Rebekas, which all could be funded by grants, then we would have three more programs out doing outreach in our community. So it's a, this consistent, like, thing of, like, we start with getting another grant manager, that grant manager gets us more money, that more money gets us another position, that position. And so it's like, how do you build this infrastructure? And it, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm always one to say that I think if we can get someone in who can get us more additional funding, that will get us more grants, then we will just be building the program out. We could have more fellows, we could have more interns from Evergreen, we could have all of those things if we had additional staff to actually upload. I mean, and that's, that's kind of what I'm hearing you guys say, is if we, we need to dedicate some more resource, which is a person, to get us more money, to get us more staff. And that's, I would agree, I think it's a great idea. Yeah.
I'd be curious, if you don't know, obviously this is a, some, maybe something you could, like, report back to us, but, and I don't know if King County's the gold standard, but I know that they've lifted some pretty unique programs up there with, like, fort law, you know, preserving land and how it ties into development, right? I mean, they've done some stuff that clearly took a lot of staffing to do. So I would be curious to know, like, what their climate staffing per capita is, you know, versus, you know, what we've got down here, to give us a sense of scale, you know, of how much we're investing in the effort. And that would be interesting, just to kind of, to hear about.
I could find that out. I know they have several. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of what time and department, because I mean, I, I've seen little videos of some of their programs, and, you know, they're pretty impressive. I mean, I, I thought, some of the stuff they did.
Yeah, looking south, Portland has some pretty dynamic things going on with climate too, so might be worth a look down there.
Okay, we should probably wrap up. Any final questions from the board? I guess one last question, I was going back to the very beginning, CPESER, did we get applicants for that program?
Yeah, they're processing our first.
Why has that not been more? I mean, we were like, you know, we jumped on that. I think we were racing Wacom County, and it was like, they were first and we were first. We were, it turned out we were within a week or something. Anyway, so we've had it for a while, took us a while to get the.
I think it's going to start.
Looking at Josh, because I know we were working together to try to get the internal processes ironed out so that the press could work. We did, it took a while, but then.
It was quick. It was pretty quick. We beat Wacom.
To get an application going?
To get an application going?
So you can only do an application if you receive an application. The reason it took so long is that nobody applied.
Well, that, well, that's where I'm going with this. So we're ready. So my question is, is it worth time to invest in outreach to get more people applying to that program? Like, because why do?
We do, we're processing our first application right now.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, that's what we've been waiting for.
And we can sell that success.
To spread word of mouth. And once those, you know, that, those, that capital provider has worked with the county, that's kind of how these go, like they've already worked with Pierce County and some of the others. So they'll probably, you know, find more projects. And so I think it's coming. I think it just was slow to, to catch on, because it's a new program statewide.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, we, we invested a lot of time and our staff has a lot of time to get it ready and I don't want to see it.
Tom was saying he invested a lot of time.
Among others, your staff, CPED staff did as well.
No, it's moving now.
So we just want to make sure we don't miss opportunity to make that more possible. Okay, I guess we've come to the end of our time. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Stream Team Overview.
Hey Stream Team, you're thirty-five.
What do we have from Stream Team?
You're thirty-five, right?
Yeah, I think so. That's what my T-shirt says.
The Eighteen.
Hi.
Hello.
Joining us. Do we do this, Mary? Do we do this?
Um, I don't think I've ever.
On demand.
Yeah.
So.
Down to go up.
Yes. Down to go up.
Everybody, how are you?
Great, good morning. Take it away.
All right.
Yours.
Thank you. Well, my name's Miriam Biasian. I'm Senior Planner for Community Engagement with Thurston County Community Planning.
And I'm Cynthia Taylor, Education and Outreach Specialist with Thurston County Community Planning.
And we're here to talk to you about Stream Team, which is a multi-jurisdictional partnership that helps the community keep our water clean.
Mary, who's this guy? Andy DePhobis, Interim Community Campaign Manager.
Um, this is an informational briefing prepared at board's request. Um, Stream Team is the public-facing brand of the Regional Environmental Education Partnership.
You see that as in? I'm going to start beginning, I promise.
Should I keep going?
No, just one sec. Just want to make sure, yeah, for public consumption.
Technical difficulties is just part of our world these days. Nice job, nice job, Randy. All right. Well, thank you. Um, Stream Team is the public-facing brand of the Regional Environmental Education Partnership with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tombwater, and Thurston County. REEP's primary mission is to meet the education and outreach requirements in our stormwater permit with the Department of Ecology. We provide free, fun, quality education about our local water and how we can reduce stormwater pollution and keep our water clean for us to drink, swim in, fish in, and for wildlife to thrive in. A quick reminder, stormwater is rain that falls to the ground and picks up dirt, oil, chemicals, and pet waste as it flows to storm drains, rivers, creeks, and out to the Puget Sound. It's the number one source of pollution to our local water. REEP operates with a five-year inter-local agreement approved by jurisdiction leadership. So thank you for your recent approval of that. And a shared work plan and a budget. By working together, we reduce costs and are more effective with our time. We share brain power and supplies and we ensure that our messages are consistent across the county. So meet your representatives. Your Thurston County representatives are Cynthia Taylor, who is the Thurston County Lead for Stream Team, and Kelsey Crane, Laura Takarsky, and myself, who all play supporting roles. Uh, we publish a quarterly newsletter, which you can usually find. I think there's one in that rack over there and in the atrium over there.
It's a great newsletter.
Thank you. Have a website with some really great resources and have an active Facebook and Instagram accounts. We're also on YouTube and we are working to increase our content there. In 2024, we gave out over eight thousand newsletters, sent monthly emails to over five thousand recipients with an average open rate of fifty-three percent, which is higher than the industry standard. And we currently have twenty-eight hundred followers on Facebook and twelve hundred followers on Instagram. So if you haven't already, give us a follow there. And we recently onboarded a new communications firm to work with us and we're excited about the direction that we're going with that.
Your Stream Team attends a variety of events hosted by partner organizations. Presence at these events allows us to connect with thousands of people, giving visibility to the Stream Team brand, connecting the public to our programs, and amplifying our impact. We curate our event attendance to ensure we reach diverse audiences and maximize our capacity. By attending Dia de la Familia, the Nisqually Tribal Summer Kickoff, Juneteenth, the Rainier Roundup, and Las Posadas de Cielo, we reach underserved populations. We attend events such as the Thurston County Fair, the Lacey Spring Fun Fair, and the Tombwater Falls Fest to reach the masses. These types of events tend to draw a lot of people from all corners of the county. It's common for us to engage more than three hundred people at each of these events. Events such as the Nisqually Watershed Festival, Tombwater Dog Days, and Orca Recovery Days allow us to focus our water quality message and education. For example, Tombwater Dog Days is our favorite place to teach people about picking up pet waste and why that's important and to promote our pet waste station program, where we, we give those away for free to neighborhoods. And last year, we partnered with Pacific Shellfish Institute to accompany us at the Festival of Stitch House, which is held at Capital Lake. And a great people to teach, a great opportunity to teach people about harmful algal blooms. If there's an event you think we should be at, let us know and we'll see if we can schedule it.
Tombwater Falls Fest, September twenty-seventh. I heard there's going to be a really good bluegrass band.
Yeah. I just wish that they didn't have, fall on the same day as the Nisqually Watershed Festival.
Really?
It's all sad, but luckily that's why we are in a multi-jurisdictional partnership.
We're going to be two places.
We can do it all.
Be two places at once, cool.
Um, Community Science Programs are a cornerstone of Stream Team's mission of stewardship. Each year, we offer trainings, programs, workshops, and educational talks to teach participants how to care for their watershed. Our community science programs are designed to accomplish four goals. One, to teach people about biological water indic, water quality indicators. So these are generally species that people can observe with their naked eye and quantify, allowing the participant to draw conclusions about the health of the habitat. Two, engage people in place-based education. Place-based education fosters a sense of ownership, responsibility, and most importantly, awe for the shared place that we call home. Three, involve people in data collection. Data collection is vital for understanding long-term trends and regional variations. And four, introduce careers in water quality to aspiring scientists. I'll talk briefly about a few of our programs. Stream Bug Monitoring teaches people about aquatic insects or macro invertebrates living in local streams. Our participants learn to collect and document a sample in the field. They then prepare the samples to be sent to the lab for analysis. The results tell us the types and diversity of stream bugs, which give us, gives a picture of the water quality in the stream. Stream Team has data dating back to the nineties and is available on a regional website, Puget Sound Bentos.
Puget Sound what?
Puget Sound Bentos.
Bentos, thank you.
Marine Creature Monday brings hundreds of people every summer to have an up-close look at amazing sea creatures that inhabit our nearshore environment. The program begins with a certified diver who collects the organisms such as sea stars, sea slugs, shrimp, rock crab, and many more. The creatures are then placed in touch tanks, allowing our volunteer marine biologists to teach people about the organisms the public are viewing. The Puget Sound S Q R M are close with us, providing a value-added presence and helping the community make further connections between fresh and marine water ecosystems. Amphibian Monitoring introduces participants to the biological diversity existing in storm ponds by focusing on frog and salamander egg masses. Each winter, volunteers don hip leaders and nets to collect data that will inform the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife of changes in amphibian populations in our local wetlands and ponds. Lastly, Neil in 2025, Stream Team is hosting Habitat at Home Workshops, also in partnership with the WDFW in four locations, Yelm, Lacey, Olympia, and Tombwater. Participants will all, will learn how to make their yard, patio, or balcony a haven for native plants and pollinators to enjoy.
Before you guys switch up that, so thank you for inviting me to the volunteer event. And the, what I learned about Marine Creature Monday sounded really amazing. And that happens at, if I remember right, Boston Harbor?
Yes.
And it happens like certain part of the year. Can you just tell people are listening, like how they can plug into that?
Yeah, it's, um, well, this year we're going to do four sessions. They'll be consecutive Mondays and we haven't set the dates yet, but traditionally it's between July and August. So the first half of July and the first, the last half of July and then the first half of August.
You can do that?
Boston Harbor.
Did I miss that part? Did they say? I asked that. Oh, okay. I just want to clarify that because, yeah, I was like, I had not heard of it and it just, I mean, all this stuff sounds cool, but that one is just something where it's like, I was surprised I hadn't heard of it.
Yeah.
And it sounded really neat and I'm sure like almost any young person would really benefit from seeing that.
Or for parents, I love that you do it in the summer for like, parents who are tired of their kiddos and want to take them out. Not speaking frankly, seriously, but.
There's value just right there.
It's definitely one of our very popular programs.
Well, you're not just in the stream then, you're also out in the water flats.
Yeah. So we're able to draw the connection between the freshwater, you know, what, basically what we're teaching people is what happens upstream ends up downstream through that program, which is fun because, you know, well, everybody knows like orca whales are one of the beloved species and a lot of people care about them, so we're able to connect like that. Let's keep our freshwater clean and unpolluted. You know, we have fresher, we have cleaner habitat for fish and other, the organisms that depend on our water quality. And Salmon Stewards is another one of Stream Team's core programs. Each year, thousands of people are educated by our trained salmon stewards. The program starts with a three-part comprehensive training that dives into the four Hs of salmon recovery, harvest, hatcheries, and habitat, and hydroelectric. We also provide a fifth H in our training, history. Including history gives a place-based context so that volunteers understand the historical impacts on and the cultural impacts, or the cultural significance of our local salmon runs. In 2024, with accessibility in mind, we moved our salmon steward training online to a learning platform, which doubled our participation and, and volunteerism. When the salmon return, we post salmon stewards at three salmon viewing locations, following the salmon along their journey. We welcome Chinook at the Fifth Avenue Bridge in Olympia around late August. Follow them to Brewery Park at Tombwater Falls around mid-September. Then in November, we welcome the chum to McLean Creek. Our salmon stewards know lots of cool salmon facts and are often equipped with salmon viewing glasses, as you see in this picture, very fun. Specimens of the salmon life cycle and information on things people can do at home to prevent pollution from entering our water.
Harvest, habitat, hydro, and what was the fourth one?
Habitat, harvest, hatcheries, and hydroelectric. And then we also include history.
Sunglasses could be like the next worldwide fad.
Yeah.
In the salmon recovery meetings, they're always talking about H integration. It's like, took me a long time to figure out what they're. Are those the H? Yeah. It's these Hs, like it's how to take these diff, because some of these, some of these worlds are a little siloed at least, you know, in science typically and, and regulatory and, and, you know, and they're getting all these different worlds to make sure these are, these policies are integrated, working together to benefit salmon, not working at cross purposes, I think is the concept.
I feel like I've learned the most on field trips with my kids when learning about like these kinds of things. Because it really is.
Breaks it down.
It really does break it down. It's like, we, we need to do this for adults. This is how, you know.
We're trying, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Anyone is welcome to take the training. You do not have to volunteer to take the training, but we just, you know, would like that.
And the way they put it ends up sticking in your brain so that like ten years later you remember.
Some silly little song.
Well, the H integration, like, I was like, oh yeah, I remember that now. And then it just took me right back to that moment, so it's smart.
Nice.
It's great.
Stormwater pollution prevention messaging is impactful. It raises awareness how everyday actions contribute to water pollution and encourages behavior changes that protect our local water. We employ several techniques to get the message across. Public awareness and education. Many people don't know that what stormwater is or how it impacts them. Pollution prevention is at the heart of all of our outreach. Behavior change. Simple, clear messaging that encourages individuals and businesses to adopt best practices. An example of this is the dumpster campaign we ran last year. It helps local businesses prevent illicit spills and discharges through adopting a simple habitat of remembering to close the lid on their dumpsters. Community involvement. Stream Team offers free pet waste stations for neighborhoods. We, we promote raking drains and we co-sponsor MLK Day restoration events at local parks. These opportunities make water quality tangible and engage people directly in stewardship. Regulatory compliance. Our Stormwater Facility Maintenance Online Course offers guidance on how to maintain stormwater facilities on properties, at businesses, and in neighborhoods so ponds continue to function as designed. Filter stormwater pollutants and protect property from flooding. Emotional and visi, visual impact. Messages that use strong visuals or storytelling create an emotional connection, making the issue feel personal and urgent. Stream Team uses our quarterly newsletter and social media channels to storytell. In fact, we allocate a significant chunk of our annual budget to communications. And currently, we're working on our 2024 end-of-the-year report, which we're excited to share with you all, which will hopefully have some good stories in it.
Something like an end-of-the-year report with all of this programming. Might be nice to recognize it at a board meeting and some of the partners. Just to do a fun awareness to the importance of the program.
Yeah, that's great, that would be fantastic.
Cool, with you on that.
Yay. Volunteers. Our Stream Team programs rely heavily on community volunteers. People from diverse walks of life and ages work together to make Thurston County a healthier place to live for people and wildlife. I really enjoyed this last year where we had, I had several teen, teen salmon stewards, which was great. I want to keep encouraging that. Because in the past, we've had a lot of the older, elder people, people who are retirement age, so it's really nice to draw in the younger sect. The genesis of Stream Team was a habitat restoration project thirty-five years ago. We now consistently offer four locations to restore habitat, Sap Road Park, Woodland Creek Park, McLean Creek Nature Trail, and Indian Creek. We appreciate the volunteers who roll up their sleeves with us and brave the BlackBerry. It's amazing how eager people are for restoration projects. Community science and restoration are not the only opportunities people have to be involved with Create Stream Team as volunteers. They can also volunteer to staff the booth at outreach events. We love having the help and enthusiasm of volunteers at these events. And I have some updated 2024 numbers, so you can reference the slide. But the updated numbers are, in 2024, we had six hundred and seventy-five volunteers. Sixteen, one thousand six hundred and eighty-four hours of volunteerism. And we had a hundred and thirty-five volunteer opportunities, including time slots.
It's amazing.
Yeah, and the registrations, so that's a little different than volunteers because that includes all of our programming. So we don't really consider the people who register for Marine Creature Mondays as volunteers because they're just being educated, but. But um, so last year we had around 1,200 registered. This year we had uh, 1,327 registrations for all of our programs.
That deserves your own applause.
I'm gonna give it back to Miriam.
Okay. Um, a focus of our work over the past few years has been to prioritize integrate equity into our work. Our goals were to discover gaps in our outreach efforts, develop a plan to address those gaps, and then start implementing that plan. So we identified these gaps by creating an equity index for Thurston County. This equity index is an interactive tool, which uses data sets to show levels of burden across the county by census block. The data was sourced from uh, things like 2019 census, Thurston County geodata, Department of Ecology's toxics data, Washington Superintendent Office, and more. The data sets were then compiled into five metrics, which form the index framework. So those are environment, education, walkability, economic stability, and livability. Each census block group or census block was then scored to indicate the level of burden experienced by the people living there. And that goes from high risk to high opportunity. We then analyzed 10 years of our audience data from our programs to find out where we, where we were missing and how those areas aligned with the equity index. We found that we reached areas with higher opportunity more than we reached areas with higher risk, indicating that we were not reaching our overburdened populations. So in uh, last year, late last year, we finalized the REEP Equity Action Plan for 2025 through 27. The plan outlines a two-year action roadmap for increasing our capacity and directing equity-focused work for the REEP partners. Priority work areas include capacity building, partnership development, um, tracking impact metrics, and workforce and career development.
It's really impressive. Good use of data.
Thank you. And that's a, we are actually working right now on updating the data, because as you saw, 2019 numbers and I feel like any data you have about people before 2020 is like out the door, because we live like, you know, a century between 2020 and now. So we are working to update some of that data and perhaps do another. We, we, once we realized where we were missing, we started automatically making changes, um, even without kind of a whole, whole bunch of analysis and planning. And so I would say that those numbers are probably already better.
Thank you for that. That's a huge deal. So I was the director at the time and Miriam came to us with this idea and the team. And they had all this data, they wanted to research the data and put it together in a way that made sense to make it actionable. And to watch it come to fruition is just, I'm over the moon, sorry.
You're just saying that you looked into where you were doing your education outreach and you were only focused on affluent neighborhoods. Is that kind of what you're saying?
Essentially, not that, it's not always just affluent. It looks at things like how far people are from libraries and what the student teacher ratio is. It looked like, looked at like 21 different points of data, but yes, income was one of them.
But wasn't also one of the, they were looking at getting the most bang for their buck, so to speak, right? So in those more highly populated areas, that's where they were holding events, but taking a look at it and saying.
Yes, but now that we're established, we can, we can afford to kind of hit smaller populations. We've recently been trying to reach out to Yelm more too, because Yelm is now part of the municipal stormwater permit. So um, they will also benefit from the programs that we're doing for their stormwater permit. Um, and then that helps us reach some more rural populations.
And what's important about this is it's not just pick your thing, finger in the air and checking the weather. It's data-driven decision-making and so we can be targeted because of that data. I think that's the huge success.
You may be tapped to teach uh, some classes to broader county understanding, because this is actually the Highlands, I've been here, the first program that I've heard actually using data appropriately for decision-making and strategy setting, which I know is a developing priority for our board. So, well done in putting that together and even noting identifying that some data wrong conclusions if you don't contextualize that in an understanding of what's taking place pre, post pandemic.
Yeah, and one thing you can also look at too with the equity index. Some of those, there's like one area that was considered high risk, but if you looked and actually drilled into the data, the average income is like $130,000 or something like that. But that was because it was so far, it was like Johnson Point or something like that, where it's an affluent area, but it's away from all of these services. Um, and then there's another area further south where it's a bright red block that you see right there, but that's all forest. So we're probably not gonna be trying to reach audiences to the forest people, so.
Are there, are there, do the colors mean something? Is it?
Um, yeah, so the, the blues and greens, that's the higher opportunity. So there's more opportunities for the people that live there. And the orange and.
When you say more opportunities, that means we've missed opportunities? Is that what you're saying?
No, more opportunities, like they have better education, they have access to grocery stores and bus lines and transportation and all of those things. So in general, not just with us, but as a whole, their opportunities for living are easier than people that are living in the higher burdened or higher risk areas.
And which ones are the high-risk areas?
The red, orange, yellow.
And you're saying we need to focus outreach efforts in those areas more? So it's not that we've been in the green areas more educating, you're just saying that they don't need the education as much?
Well, both. We have been in those areas more. When we, because we did two things, we did the equity index that, that showed us the levels of risk and opportunity, right? And, and just in general.
So did you overlay on the top of it a map where you've been and you're like, oh, you've been in the green areas for the last?
Yes, yeah, and most of that's because it's urban and stormwater is, for the most part, has been urban messaging. So that's one of the reasons. Okay, questions? So our partnerships are critical to our success. For the last couple of years, we've been fostering a really great relationship with CLO, which has been incredibly rewarding. CLO is a non, local nonprofit that supports the local Latinx community in Thurston County. Um, working with CLO, we co-designed outdoor educational activities that benefit the Latinx community in Thurston County. To remove barriers to participation, we included uh, translation services, food, and transportation. Last year, we partnered with Department of Fish and Wildlife and Pacific Education Institute to launch the Latinx Conservation Week Tomwater Falls Salmon Celebration. That event included tours of the salmon hatchery and falls, uh, salmon dissection, Latin food truck, and informational booths with translated materials, including information on careers in water. Um, and one experience was this, um, and this is a little bit gross, but this one kid got to dissect the salmon eyeball. And I'm pretty sure he's gonna be um, a biologist and conservationist in 15 years. So it's really cool for kids to be able to have activities like that, to be able to, you get to see that spark in them. Some of our other partnerships include South Puget Sound Community College to help promote career paths in stormwater, Puget Sound Estuarium for Marine Creature Mondays, and South Sound Green to reach our K through 12 schools. We're also rekindling a partnership with the Olympia Hands on Children's Museum with the hopes to help guide and inform the educational displays in their upcoming museum edition.
If someone wanted to build a partnership with you, how would they, how would, would we just get them in connection?
Just get us in connection. I will say, we are really trying to focus on one true partnership a year, because as you all know, building relationships and trust takes a lot of consistency and time and effort, and we want to do it right. So that's what we've been doing with CLO. We don't want to spread ourselves too thin and then not be able to meet the commitments that we've set with these partnerships.
I was on one of those tours and it was awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's, they're pretty cool. We usually have big plans and 2025 is no different. This year, our main focus will be capacity building. One of our biggest challenges is having the time to implement all of these programs, assess their effectiveness, and expand our audiences. It's essential that we build our capacity through partnerships, volunteer assistance, and grant opportunities. Um, we're also expanding our nature slips program. Nature slips is an app-based but real-world treasure hunt for the whole family. It's something that was created out of COVID to be able to still um, meet some of our requirements and get people outside. But all of those event limitations that we had then. Participants complete stormwater-related missions at over 30 parks and natural areas in Thurston County using their phones. Missions include spotting where the saltwater meets the freshwater at the Billy Frink Jr. Nisqually Wildlife Refuge, finding the finch ladders at Tomwater Falls, discovering native prairie plants at Mima Mounds. There's a unique sticker for every mission and you've got to catch them all. Um, I always said it's like Pokemon Go, but way cooler.
We're in for an adult.
Rachel is on it.
He's so cool.
The great commissioner race.
I mean, I'm gonna be really honest, like this whole time I'm thinking about your outreach and I'm thinking, boy, what a, there's a popul, you know, a population that I think about all of the time, which is um, people who are in recovery or people who are in treatment centers and, and so, um, or, and looking for things to do. We're always looking for fun things to do and this is, I can already tell you that if I pass this information on, we'll have people out doing it. There's large groups of people in recovery who are out looking for things to do on the weekends. This would be a really great opportunity for them to be engaged. So all you have to do is like have a sticker at the end and they're in. You're on it. I'm on it.
Yes.
Fastest person to get through all 30 places. It would be a great fun. It's a great fun.
Well, we're adding new missions across the county this year and updating existing missions with new information about stormwater. And we're also translating some of our missions into Spanish. We are expanding our reach to our South County communities. To reach these communities, we need to consider our messaging. Stormwater messaging has typically been focused on urban environments. But we are including a lot more rural messaging in our newsletters, emails, and social media to include celebrating our local farmer and rancher conservationists and sharing best practices for rural stormwater solutions. We're also adding more programming in general to the South County area and exploring uh, even more ways to add more. Right now, we're searching for a salmon viewing location and stream bug monitoring location in that area. So if you'd like to learn more about Stream Team, visit our website, follow us on social media. Um, and you're always welcome to any of the events we have throughout the year. We'd love to see you there. This is just a really wonderful program for our community and we're just really honored to be a part of it.
Yeah, thank you for your support of it.
Yes.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you to, like, both of you. I've attended a couple of events throughout the years and just seeing, when you're talking about these volunteers, it's, they're very engaged, like, it's not just like, I'm gonna go to one event a year. They're continuously there and it's very strange to see that, right? Especially people lose interest and then they move on, but with Stream Team, people keep coming back year after year after year. And I believe this year you gave awards to people who'd been with the program for, volunteering with the program for a long time and it was just, or how many hours they had donated throughout the year. And it was just, just crazy to hear how much, uh, not crazy, but it was just great to see how engaged people are. I also attended the event that you hosted with CLO last year and it was just so exciting to see you engage with the community in that way and see uh, a community that's not usually engaged into like, right? They'll go through to Shute's Park, take a walk, but actually learning about the process and what each sector, like section means was, you know, for me, it hit me in the feels, right? That's, that's a community I'm uh, very close with. So it was just great and having those translation services. So I just, a big shout out to all the work that you two are doing and Laura's doing is not here, but that uh, partnership that we have with the other regions is also very important and you represent Thurston County very well on it. So thank you both.
Yeah.
And can I, can I, can I just ask a quick question? So um, how is uh, are you funded by multiple grants or how is your?
No, we're funded with stormwater utility fees.
Oh, okay.
We want to explore grants to increase our capacity. Our, our limiting factor tends to be time, so what we're hoping to do is potentially fund like a part-time administrative assistant to help us with that.
Okay, just wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Great presentation. We got some stickers we can.
Yep, yeah.
Anybody wants a sticker?
If you want a cool sticker for your water bottle, we brought stickers.
Pass them out. Thank you.
See, we need an air team. Do you hear, see this, we need, we have Stream Team, we need an air team. And then we have all the people who learn about heat pumps and why our power is so high on our power bills and.
Thank you.
This is awesome. I already have one on my window, but.
I gave mine to my daughter, so I'm taking this one.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, I'll put mine on my cup. Five years.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thirty-five years.
Thank you, Amy.
See what happens when you give staff a group, makes all kinds of stuff.
Okay, next up, closed session, RCW 423144A. Do we need to take a break?
Yeah, I need to go.
So it's uh, 10:28, let's reconvene at 10:40.
My, come on.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
Keep going. Sorry, guys, but.
Bring it.
I just downed this whole coffee and.
I forgot, we don't do the three-hour things that much anymore.
Can't stop, won't stop.
I know you won't, but.
Next.
Uh, we have a 10-minute break? Is that what you said?
With that gavel back on. Yeah.
Did you get to bang the gavel?
Oh, heck yeah. Unruly public comment. Oh, I was ready for that, but it didn't happen.
I know. I was like, he's off.
I like it. You're the boss. What's that color? I need these. I could have not said it. I can't say it.
Okay, we are out of closed session. No board action is following that closed session. We're up to item four on the morning agenda, which is advancing pretrial policy and research, or what we call APPR, reflections and next steps. We have Judge Schaller from Superior Court, Carrie Henin, Director of Pretrial Services, and Patrick O'Connor, Director of Public Defense. Thank you guys for joining us. I've been wondering about this topic for a bit, so I'm glad you're here. We've got a new commissioner here, so you might want to give a little bit of background, maybe you, just so that we are all on the same page, and then you can turn over to you guys.
That's good.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and kick us off, and I am Chris Schaller, and I have not met the newest commissioner, I don't think.
No, I don't think so, but yeah, nice to meet you. I'm Rachel Grant.
Nice to meet you. I have been at Superior Court for, this is crazy, for 20 years. As of yesterday, eight years as a commissioner, and 12 years as a judge. And we're talking today about advancing pretrial policy and research, a project that we, criminal justice stakeholders were involved with for over five years. The project itself was five years, but leading up to it, we were planning for it as well. We applied for this technical assistance in 2018, and at that time, Mary Ann Clear was our Pretrial Services Director, and she, we came to a consensus with the Pretrial Services Governing Board to apply for this technical assistance, and it was granted in early 2019. And we started the project in July of 2019 with a kickoff meeting where myself, as the presiding judge at that time of Superior Court, John Toonheim, Patrick O'Connor, Mary Ann Clear, Eric Price was a Superior Court judge, and then Chief Todd Toma went to the kickoff meeting, and we continued the project for five years, and we just concluded it in December of 2024. We were one of a very few research action sites that were selected for this project. It was funded by Arnold Ventures, and we had incredible technical assistance that both, I think Patrick and Carrie can talk more about too, and feel free to jump in, which included basically what I would term as like a project manager who helped keep us on task, who arranged agendas for every meeting with input from the chair of the team as well as Pretrial Services Director. We had national experts come in and educate our group on different topic areas, and then most importantly, they ultimately helped us create a data source, which Carrie is going to talk about, which has been invaluable and will be invaluable going forward so that we can have really data-based information to help inform how we make changes going forward in our pretrial system. And as the slide indicates, we had assistance from the Center for Effective Public Policy, the Center for Innovative Justice Innovation, and others along the way. After our kickoff meetings, that is at the end of July of 2019, we agreed at the end of our time there, I don't know, it was three, four, five days, I can't remember how long we were there, that we would meet monthly, and that we would form an advisory committee that would be the working committee when we came back and started working on this project. So that advisory committee has been comprised of judges from Superior Court, which were myself and Judge Price, District Court, which has been, was, well, it has been Judge Meyer, originally it was Judge Buckley, the Director of Pretrial Services, John Toonheim has been the prosecuting attorney's office person, Patrick O'Connor has been the public defense representative initially from the sheriff's office, Sheriff Snaza, and then we also had the head of corrections, so originally that was Chief Toma, and of course, when the sheriff changed and the chief of the jail changed, that membership changed on the committee as well. We invited all of the police chiefs from the different cities within the county to participate. In the end, Chief Almada from Lacey ended up being the representative for all of the police chiefs to our advisory committee. We had the county manager as the Board of County Commissioners representative, and then it was an assistant county manager, and then we have had someone from the administrative office of the courts. We also at times have had a couple of other people who have come on and off the advisory committee. And one of the precepts that we adopted when we started this is that there were no substitutes. If you could not make a meeting, we met once a month, the first Wednesday of every month for two hours, you did not send a substitute, so that we did not spend our meetings trying to catch people up about where we were in the process or what had been happening. And that turned out, I think, to be very, very effective because we had continuity, and we were required to get this technical assistance to agree that the presiding judge, the elected prosecutor, the sheriff, the Director of Pretrial Services, and the head of public defense, that those people would be a part of this court team. So in August of 2019, when we met, a small group of us met to come up with our vision, mission, and values, I'm not going to read them to you, they are on the slide, but we actually did adopt those in August of 2019. We had a proposal that a small committee put together, both Patrick and I were on, working on the values portion of it, and then the full group adopted this, and we have continued to come back to this as we have worked on this project for five years. And I do believe that our vision of continuing to work for a fair and just pretrial system that protects the community has been at the core of all of the work that we have done on this project. So accomplishments, I think really the first accomplishment that should be up there that is not, is that we started this project in July of 2019, and then in March of 2020, the world changed and everything shut down, and this project could easily have gone away, but through, I think, our dedication and really the pushing from the project itself and our project manager, who said, no, don't give up, we can just pivot, and we can talk about things that are relevant to you right now during COVID and how you are running your pretrial system, we continued with the project, which ultimately allowed us to make some significant changes. Also, except for people who changed because of elections, the advisory committee is the same today as it was when we started it five years ago, which I think also shows the dedication of all of the criminal justice stakeholders to this project and to improving our pretrial system. During our project, though, we mapped the entire system, which took an incredibly, a long period of time, everyone participated in that, we worked on communications, we had briefings done with the media, we did a commissioner, what was that called, coffee with the commissioner? We had coffee with the commissioner, we created a critical incident protocol, we have improved our pretrial first appearances, and have, most importantly, also implemented the public safety assessment, which is a validated tool for Thurston County that provides information at our first appearance hearings as it relates to informing the court on conditions of release. And one of the other big accomplishments is that all of these areas involved a wide variety of people. We had multiple work groups, including determining how we would define violent offenses, we had the mapping group, the release conditions matrix group, first appearance group, communications group, and a group that was involved in making recommendations for domestic violence and interpersonal violence. So we had many representatives from all of these different areas, different judges, different prosecutors, different defense, different people from pretrial services, different people from law enforcement, involved in these small work groups that helped come up with recommendations as it really related to how we could improve our system and effectively roll out the public safety assessment.
All right, one of the things we're most excited about is that we actually now have data on our pretrial system, and Judge Schaller and Patrick have been involved in this longer than I have, but rewinding five or six years ago, everyone in the justice system goes through the pretrial system, and I think as a community, we knew very little about what that looked like, what were the types of decisions being made at the preliminary appearance, what were the outcomes during that pretrial period. We, we say we, our sort of highest goals are court appearance and remaining arrest-free during the pretrial period. Couldn't really report on whether that was the case here in Thurston County, and now we can, and it's extremely exciting. And it, so again, this is something we could not have accomplished without our really intensive external technical assistance, so working with the Center for Justice Innovation and strong contributions and partnership from the state level administrative office of the courts. We now have an interactive dashboard and the ability to produce monthly reports, quarterly reports, that really give us a very detailed book at all aspects of our pretrial system, so what types of cases are coming in, what are the offenses, what are the risk levels of people coming in, what types of decisions are being made at that first appearance, what types of conditions are being imposed, whether that includes cash bail, pretrial supervision, other things. And then are people being released? Are they actually released to the community during the pretrial period, at what rate, what proportion of people remain detained throughout pretrial, what proportion are released? And then again, these ultimate questions, we really care about, what happens during that pretrial period? Do people show up for court? Do people remain arrest-free? Again, through this project and some of the intensive technical assistance that Judge Schaller talked about, we got a lot of education, we got a lot of, we had a lot of sort of, you know, national thinkers telling us all about the national data, most people are successful during the pretrial period, most people show up for court. I got tired of saying most people nationally are successful during the pretrial period, and now we're able to say, actually, in Thurston County, we know how many people are successful. This is, I will say, this is not a fully done deal, there's a few, we are continuing to get some TA support on our data, so there's a few pieces that we are still working on, but we have really powerful ability to report on all of these things. I was just telling these folks before the meeting, I had, you know, questions from my team last week about, well, you know, we observe this happening, and why does this always happen? And I was able to go into the data and say, well, it doesn't always happen, it only happens 27% of the time, and it's really empowering to be able to actually sort of respond to perceptions and anecdote with cold, hard numbers. So these are just a couple screenshots of the types of data we're able to produce now, so we're using a few different data sources. Our pretrials case management system is kind of the biggest data source for this, and then we weave in a couple of additional data sources, and I'm not going to orient you to all the detailed charts, I'm more trying to illustrate, we have a lot of data, we can answer a lot of questions, we can do different time periods, we can look at different dimensions, and it's really exciting to be able to have those conversations, and I think that this is sort of the gift that we'll keep on giving of this period, that we can kind of have those kinds of discussions. So we have a monthly report, we have a quarterly report, and then we have a lot of near, near-infinite ways of slicing and dicing the data, it's almost one from we have no data to we have so much data that now the challenge is, what's, what are the stories we want to tell, et cetera? You look like you might want to say something.
Can I ask a question, or do I wait till the end?
I'll defer to the chair.
I think we have time, Claire.
Okay.
Okay, I, I guess it's like, so how are we going to tell the story, right? There's been some community questions about the program. And so now that, you know, the data is coming out, like, so how do we tell that story maybe for 2024? And what, you know, it actually is doing in terms of impacts to the community?
That's a great question. I'd say we're still working on that, because, you know, again, we now have all this information, so what is the story within there? We, when first kind of presented with this dashboard, we said, "Wow, that's a lot. We need a cheat sheet," and now we need sort of a cheat sheet to the cheat sheet. But I think, and this is as we get into the looking ahead and our future goals, I think that's a piece of that is, you know, what, what is the story? Refocusing on those, you know, kind of the core, the mission of this project, the mission of what does success look like during the pretrial period? So again, focusing back on those outcomes of are people released or detained pretrial? And are they successfully appeared at court? Do they remain arrest-free during the pretrial period? So I, I think that part is still in development in terms of like packaging this very powerful set of information and telling the story that relates to our, all the training we got on communications and messaging and language. But I think those are some of our goals going forward.
I just want to add something to that really quick. So we're not trying to tell, and I'm not trying to be critical of what Carrie said, but we're not trying to tell a story, data is data, and that's the problem, right? Is that we have these little anecdotes, these little stories that people like to glom onto and act as if that is representative of what is happening in our pretrial system. And that is not what is happening. And I think that that is what ultimately, as we are able to have data, and our data will never be like we have the data for today. With the information we get from the Administrative Office of the Courts, I believe that their data is like four months, four months behind?
About that.
So we have relatively recent data. So we can say of the people who are released pretrial and who achieve release, who are actually out in the community, this percentage of people are appearing at court. And we can determine people who are on release and whether or not they are alleged to have committed another criminal law violation. That's a statistic that we will be able to tell. And those are two of the things that we're looking at when we are setting conditions of release. So I think that that's super relevant and important, I think, potentially to what Mr. Mahia was talking about and concerns in the community. But the reality is, when we set our conditions of release, it's not perfect. We certainly never release anyone who we believe is going to commit some sort of violent offense. But there is a presumption of release, and I think that this, the Public Safety Assessment and then the ability to track the data now will be able to, in a real way, give concrete, real information instead of taking one incident that may have occurred and spinning that into, "That's what's happening in our community."
I'll just add, you know, to Judge Schaller's point earlier, having been around the system for a long time with Judge Schaller, prior to this project, we had no data. So like any system, where you're judging or trying to assess the effectiveness of a system or areas of improvement of a system, this critical portion of the justice system had no data for us to, to ask those questions or to assess effectiveness, failures, successes, et cetera. So that really has been our team's focus, is to get us to a point now where we're able to judge those things for our pretrial justice system.
I do. Oh, I was letting him, yeah. Oh, if you have something, go ahead. Uh, okay, so what was I going to say? Or I was going to ask, well, I mean, I, first of all, I think this is, well, you know, I love data. I know that we have not officially, I haven't told you much about myself, but I was in your courtroom at one point in time back 21 years ago in drug court and then ended up becoming, working with a master's degree for DSHS for True Blood for years. And so I'm very familiar with the problems with data and the need for data and the need for data, and I would say to tell a story, but the need for the larger overall story. And my question for you guys is around, so I saw Judge, or Judge, I saw John Toonheim, you know, in the Law and Justice meeting that we had, you know, presented his dashboard. So I've got his dashboard, I'm all about data, so I'm like, you know, we've got this dashboard, I knew this was coming too, and that this is out there, and we've got this, the sheriff's got something going over here. And so when I think about, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to tell the story? That all of those different pieces all play into, how are we going to, what are we going to do to build a jail? How many people do we need in the jail? How are we going to, do we need a bigger courtroom? How many people are we seeing in the courtroom? All of this data answers all of those questions. My question then for you, though, is that is this the same dataset that John is using for his data? Because, concern, that's concern. And, you know, because, and I know it's AOC data and it pulls along, but how is this then connecting to the other pieces of the system? That's my question.
Justice counts stepping up. Yeah, there's like seven dashboards, like.
Yeah, I know.
From zero to seven.
We're going to need to find a way to tie it all together, right? So, yeah.
That is a great question to me. I mean, that's the ultimate goal, and that's something that I think Leah talked about a lot when she was here, you know, could we build a data warehouse that weaves together? You know, we all have our own systems that we're tracking data in. I don't think we're quite there yet, but I still think it's huge progress that we have the data we have and that the prosecutor has the data he has and that we're starting to use justice counts, et cetera. So, I mean, very direct answer, like, no, this isn't coming from the same place that the prosecutor's office dashboard is coming from. If you dove down into it, I hope we would see kind of similar trends because the underlying, you know, the underlying cases are the same cases. But I still think this is huge progress compared to where we were a few years ago in terms of, certainly for the pretrial system, but I think other points of the justice system as well. Ultimately, having that data warehouse that integrates, weaves together all these different data sources is a great goal, and I don't think we sit back and wait until we have that before we each report on our pieces of the system.
Yeah, well, and I will just say that I think that's fine. I think it's okay to say, "We don't want to tell the story with all of it," right? Because, well, I mean, we want to tell stories, but we want to be able to identify that you put this pretrial information together to help you guys make some decisions around your office and around the way that, and to help our, I mean, this is the way I look at it, the way that we can help our community feel a little more safe about the decisions we're making in pretrial, right? And, but it doesn't, you know, if it says that we had, I worry, I worry, I'm just going to say it again, that I worry that if it says that we had 2,000 cases in 2025 and John says we had 2,500 cases in 2025, and Sheriff Kenneth Sanders says we had 1,900, then the newspaper is going to say Thurston County doesn't know what the hell they're talking about. So I'm just going to put that out there. But, so I would just want us to all be kind of having our quality guys double checking that we're somewhat in line, you know, before, you know, we do all of this. But, but I'm excited about this because I'm all about pretrial and not wanting people to go to jail. And, and so I think this work has been incredible, and the fact that you guys have been able to use a technical grant like this to move, work forward so much is amazing. And so I'm really applaud you for it because it's not easy to do, and I applaud your work. Yeah.
I think that's why most justice systems don't do this.
I know.
And candidly.
It's hard.
Besides Pierce County, Thurston County, there's not very many counties in the state of Washington, not many places in the country that have this type of data. So we're very fortunate.
You know, you guys touched on it, but for me, like, I've worked in four different states and legal as a lawyer and, and as a community member. And I always remarked about how Washington seems very unique to me in the places I've lived, about when something happens, the legislators just jump to like try to fix it. Like, one bad incident, and then we have a new law that doesn't fit for 99% of the cases, but it might have stopped that one thing that we didn't want to happen. But when you have data like this, you can sort of have a more balanced discussion and say, "Well, okay, how often is that happening?" Like, once in a blue moon? So are we going to do something that doesn't work for 98% of the cases because we want to stop the 2%? Maybe that's a good trade-off, but you should at least be talking about it in those terms and understanding those numbers. And when you don't have them, you can't have that kind of conversation. And you get what I consider to be, in many cases, bad policy that really harms, you know, the vast majority of situations in order to try to fix, you know, something that happens very infrequently or couldn't be prevented or whatever. I mean, there's, sometimes you can fix something, sometimes you can't. But everyone wants to try, and I understand the motivation, and, you know, we always want to be responsive to things that happen and try to make things better. But this allows for better policy to result.
Exactly. I was going to say that too, so like pretrial diversion. I mean, working for DSHS for years and Jason Carpenter, different work that we have been doing in the state over the years. This is really one of the, and I think that we really need to acknowledge this, that taking the time to put the work in to create a good dataset is going to help inform the overall statewide system in a huge way in order for people to make better decisions about each of their own counties. So congratulations on getting this done. And I just, I wanted to make sure we acknowledge that because it's really important to the overall statewide work as well.
Okay, looking ahead.
Looking ahead.
Yeah.
Looking back to Judge Schaller.
So in our last, last year in 2024, we had two half-day retreats related to talk about where we were at in the project and where we thought the project should go once we were done with our technical assistance, which ended in December, except for data, which we still have for another eighteen, about 18 months. And so what our group has decided is that we are going to meet quarterly. We made some goals on areas that we wanted to continue to drill down in where we didn't feel like we had, where there was still room for improvement. And that is, of course, analyzing the data every quarter about what has happened in the last quarter and compare it to other data that we have. Are there different decisions? What are the outcomes? We wanted to continue to address the issue of domestic violence and interpartner violence. The Public Safety Assessment is validated across every type of case. So that includes domestic violence and interpartner violence cases. But it doesn't address lethality, and that is something that the judges were very strong about us wanting to see if there was something else, other information that we could be provided that is from some sort of validated tool so that we'd have the information related to kind of lethality factors at the time that we are setting conditions of release. We continue to work on that issue right now. It's hoped that the Danger Assessment Law Enforcement, the DALE, will be implemented in Thurston County. The Sheriff's Office is working on that and some of the local law enforcement as well. So that's part of what our group is going to continue to be looking at and working on and looking at our first appearances and our data. And then also training. Carrie's kind of in charge of ensuring that we have updated training for each of our areas for new employees, and then also refresh our training for everyone in our different offices within the court and then within the prosecutor's office and public defense. And we decided to meet quarterly because we don't need to meet monthly any longer, but we don't want to lose the momentum behind this project. And then seeing the fruition of it, seeing how we can use data to inform how we are running our pretrial process.
And just to reiterate the point about kind of ongoing technical assistance, so the very broad APPR kind of full, full package of technical assistance formally ended at the end of 2024. As that wrapped up, one of our TA partners identified for us another TA opportunity that we requested and are successfully receiving. So this is the Bureau of Justice Assistance, Justice for All, and that's really focused on the data. So the ongoing support from this organization that has helped us build out this dashboard so that we can refine that dashboard and also move towards sustainability so that I'm able to update the dashboard on an ongoing basis without getting my PhD in statistics. So we're working, working on that. So we are very fortunate to have hopefully up to 18 months of technical assistance as long as their funding continues. So that ongoing support for data is really helpful, so fortunate to have that.
I just wanted to add one other thing. So this, having this technical assistance, there were other jurisdictions throughout the country who had the technical assistance as well, and other jurisdictions who have received technical assistance since we started our project, and there were people who had been involved in this process before we started our process. And from the people that we've worked with at a national level, they did recognize that Thurston County was very unique in two major ways. One, a lot of jurisdictions are collaborative, but the nature of the collaboration that we have despite the criminal justice system, of course, being an adversarial system, they were very impressed how everyone came to the table. We also did have the participation of law enforcement in a way that no other jurisdiction that they had worked with, that they had seen before as it related to the commitment from both the sheriff and from the local police departments as well through Chief Almata, and how that enriched our discussions and made our process better in many ways because we were able to have that kind of involvement.
I just publicly just want to say that a big team thank you to Carrie coming on board and Carrie and this project across the globe. A big transition, hundreds of hours of kind work from all of us as stakeholders to this project. So I just want to thank Carrie for getting us to where we're at right now. This project will endure, so thank you.
That's right, Carrie, you came right as it was like.
She abandoned TSC.
It was a critical point, it was a critical point in the project.
It was a very critical point.
Trying to implement this static risk tool, which was a big endeavor, and it's in play, so.
So can I ask just one last question? So then, at the end of the 18 months, so without you getting a PhD in statistics, which none of us want, so there is going to be kind of a need at some point for us to figure out how this will ongoingly be updated, like through a kind of a, hopefully we can bring it all together at some point. But that will be kind of what will need to happen, or?
The goal, the technical assistance we're getting, they are very mindful of planning for sustainability. So what we're trying to create, you know, this, the primary support we're getting, he's, you know, writing all this code, the code hopefully will be in place. There's, it's almost like following a recipe. Hopefully, we are working with, just in a week or two, and meeting with our external partner and Thurston County IT about, you know, so can we practice the process of updating the dashboard ourselves while we still have the help? And hopefully do that month after month while we still have the help, work out the kinks.
Excellent.
If that code breaks, that may be a different conversation. But it's, the, the goal is very much to set it up so that we are able to do this on our own. That is, that is the hope.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
Or to identify the next free technical assistance opportunity for another 18 months. All right, but it's very much an eye towards sustainability. How do we do this ourselves?
Awesome.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, yeah, thanks.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Two commissioners down, I would like to. Heads up to the team, I may not be available 1:00 PM. My daughter has an enlarged appendix, doctor's telling me to take her to ER right now. We were there all night Sunday night, and they were like on the, on the fence about whether to give her, and after that, like me and others saying she probably should have it. So I'm going to be, we may not have a court.